All right, so I'm gonna say this again for our viewers at home. We have a little technical difficulty here tonight. I hope you can all hear us. We're happy to have everyone with us. And we are gonna start with our CCHS student update. So Felicity, I think you're on. Perfect. Oh, Zari is with us too, right? All right, go right ahead.
Right. So Harry is not able to be here today, but we also have a bit of a relatively brief update. But most students-
I'm tired being in front of the school committee for soccer, but I don't really know what's happening.
Could mute your screens? Mute your microphone, sorry? I took care of it. Thank you. All right, Felicity.
Okay, sorry. Most students are pretty busy with some pre-winter break exams and projects. We don't really have finals or midterms and finals until January, but there's a lot of units wrapping up in most classes.
Seniors have started sharing their early college decisions. I know my friend's friend, because I'm not a senior, my friend's friend said that a lot of people are getting their letters today or this week, and that's always exciting, so.
Yeah, it's definitely been really exciting to hear where a lot of seniors are going. Prism was last Friday and Saturday evening, and that was also a huge success. You can see some of the photos here at the top of the slide. This is the first Prism with chorus, and there were a lot of very cool student performances, of course.
Today, BSCU had our first meeting with another BSCU at Bedford High Schools. We had a potluck, and it was really fun. We got to connect with another BSCU, and I think we're gonna try to plan to do more of these. Because it's really fun. Many clubs are hosting fundraisers and donations for charities. Like, as you can see on the right, there's a fundraiser for Cradles to Crayons. I'm not sure what club is doing that, but I know there's so many.
It's Agenda, yeah.
It's Agenda?
Thinker's Agenda.
Thinker's Agenda.
I think other clubs like Red Cross are also doing some fundraisers. Yeah.
Those are always really cool and good ways to help in our community, and yeah.
Yeah, and overall, of course, there's been a lot of excitement for winter break. This Friday is another half-day, and that's a lot. There will be a couple of traditions that we have, like the class government candy cane sale. Over the past few days, they deliver candy canes to students in different classes. So that's always fun to see, like, whose friends sent them candy canes. And then the Coral pop-up concerts are also happening this year during the middle blocks of the day, which will also be very exciting. We perform some, like, Christmas carols and stuff in breakout spaces, which is fun. So yeah, we didn't have a whole ton today, since it's basically winding down before winter break, but.
Why not, right? We always love your updates. I don't know if anyone on this school committee has any questions for our students?
I'm not sure if I can see the soccer team is all here.
Oh, yeah, soccer team is here too, so, you know, they'll be getting their update in a minute. Thank you so much, and thanks for being with us again. We wish you a great break and a happy new year, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and next up, we're very excited. We have a lot of viewers at home too, which is really exciting. I wish that our cameras were working properly, but apparently the school committee room is getting a bit of a few cameras over break. So we are thrilled to have the CCHS championship soccer team with us. They are state champs and also represent nationally, so. Why don't I add on today? I wanna introduce David, the coaches.
Yeah, Coach Wells is here. Do you wanna come up? And I'll let you take it from there. I know there's a few folks who are gonna speak tonight.
We have handheld mics, so you have to-
Well, I didn't think they're working though. Oh, okay.
Oh.
The audio wasn't working?
At all.
So just talking.
Jenny, you're on the side of the field, right? Here's our coaching voice.
Oh, so use the mic. It's also recording, so anyone that speaks, if you can use a handheld mic, because I'm assuming we might have some of these students speaking.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for having us. We really appreciate the acknowledgement, the great season. These guys were incredible throughout the year. We're really proud of them as a coaching staff. Just the hard work they put in, you know, starting over the summer and obviously continuing through the whole fall season. They really put in, you know, so much time and effort to make this dream for so many of them. You know, I know a lot of these guys grew up playing youth soccer in Concord and Carlisle, and to step on the field and win the state championship, go undefeated, you know, something we've had a lot of great teams over the years, and only one other team in our team's history has done that. Or his son was a member of that team, so he knows well. So just an incredible season. We're really proud of all the effort that the guys put in.
It was a really exciting season. I did go to a lot of your games, and I think I played in the playoff games. I think most of us were in the playoff games. So it was an exciting team to watch, and as the season went on, to really see the team grow together. So you made it exciting, I think, for the entire town. I think you saw online that Dr. Hunter posted a video of the police.
Yeah, that must be the I posted is still churning, churning and re-churning, so it's fun.
So it's been really exciting, I think, for the whole town. And I did hear you guys had a championship. There was something this weekend. It was like the breakfast with the champions or something like that. Can you talk a little bit about that?
It was, we called it Meet the Champions.
Yeah.
So players from the youth program came out. They got to meet some of the guys and signed, they signed autographs. Had a kick around, so it was really a nice little bit well-received in the community. So that was, I know it was fun for the kids, and I know it was fun for our players as well.
That's great, very good. Could we hear maybe a couple of the players?
I think that's the plan.
Okay, great. And we have two mics that you guys can-
There's another one, maybe, yes?
You can bring a chair with you too, that's fine.
All right, hello. My name is Brady Forrester, I'm one of the senior captains here. And talking about the season, I would say, in the beginning, we knew we were a really good team. We had a lot of individual skill, like some of the best individuals in state, I'd say, but something wasn't clicking, so like, we all knew that. So basically, our coach, he saw that, like, we needed to work on it more, and stuff needed to be better, so we went to Pine Hill, which is, I don't know if you guys know what that is. It's a really big hill, it's really steep, it's really hard. And we had to run that for a very long time, to the point where some of us were throwing up. And I guess that sort of, like, unlocked, like, a bond between us and made us more of one team instead of a bunch of really talented individual players. But I guess that just helped us. That's what we needed. That kind of was the spark that helped us throughout the season to lead us to the state championship. Yeah.
Yeah, to continue on that, it was a really fun year. We had a great tempo on and off the field. On the field, you know, we were undefeated, which is pretty awesome. It's fun to say that, but even off the field, that was just a great group of guys. It was a good day, you know, to spend every day, almost from like August all the way till like end of November. So it was like, I always look forward to practices and games and stuff. And we had a really big team. We had 33 guys, which is one of the biggest teams in the state. But we had a really good bond with everybody, and, you know, we, like, psyched dinners before games. The day before game, we'd have big dinners with teams at somebody's house. That'd be really fun. I always look forward to that. And before the season started, we went up to Maine instead, a night at someone at one of our teammates' house up there. That was a turning point, you know, just, I could tell early on that we had a really special thing to guys, and we bonded really well.
Yeah, just, I'm Sean Truitt, I'm a defender. I'll just add on, it's really fun to spend this year together and play with a group of guys I've known for my whole life, whether that's, you know, going from all the way from elementary school or seeing other guys from Target, which Coach Pavlik ran when we were like five. It really instilled a family, and a lot of sports teams call each other family, but it's truly a group of brothers. And they really grew to a sense of trust on the field, you know? I trusted my force to score. There were a few games where we tied up with like a minute left, but I'd hope and beat one of the both of the games. But that's just a little, and, you know, trusting people in practice, they try their best, really trust everywhere, and that really made a difference for us. Yeah, to add to that, I would say that it's not only trust between like each other and all the players, it's also the coaches and like the whole coaching staff. But I think when we go wrong on the field or off the field, the coach is always there to support us, to figure out what went wrong, how we can fix it. You know, I think Coach Pavlik mentioned, like, and Brady, that we have a very skilled team individually, but there's a lot of skilled teams like around the state. And what separates us is just the bond that we have, all the players and coaches. So that really is what puts us on top. Yeah, so I think, like, everyone, maybe outside the team, I say congratulations on a great season winning the state championship. But I think really the main takeaway from just like this season and in all the past other seasons, we're just the dreams that we created along that path. I mean, this is why we have everyone here almost talking about the same thing, like the bond that was created during that spacing season. And as a senior captain, or has been on the team for three years, each year, that bond has always been something special. I know our coach Pavlik has always tried to make that something super special, and that's like the main focus. The main focus is winning state championship. Obviously, that's like amazing, and everyone, everyone on the team, you know, we all want to win the state championship. The takeaway is just the special bond that's gonna stay with us forever.
Yeah, my name's Nate, and I have a little bit of a different role to Sean. I was more on the bench this season, my first year on varsity, but I really found a lot of purpose and fulfillment and sort of being the motivator on the sidelines and engaging with younger guys and just developing, you know, relationships with teammates that, you know, whether they were new or whether they were the guys I've been playing with for as long as I can remember, you know? As everyone's been saying, the brotherhood was super strong from the get-go, but also it just kept building. And, you know, I do, I do think of the team like a family. And I'm so happy we got to run so far and have so many great memories. But yeah, it all comes back to just that bond. And I think Concord and Carlisle is a really special place because, you know, that bond starts from a really young age and, you know, to wear the patch and to play for the school and means something to all of us. So I just wanna thank all of the guests for all your support and all the coaches as well. We couldn't have this great season without everybody here, so, yeah, thank you, guys.
Good work, yeah. So this is definitely an impressive bunch. I believe Mr. Booth is something that he'd like to say.
Well, you thank a lot of people, and we wanna join you in thanking your families for getting you here too. None of us got here on our own, and that includes you. You had a lot of support, and mostly it didn't come from this table. It came from the homes that they all came from. You talked a few times about trust, and that is something that has to get built very carefully, you know, day by day, practice by practice, game by game. And then suddenly you reach a point where you can put the ball where your colleague is gonna be. Right? You gotta trust, he's gonna be there. And then you found it really worked. And then we could go to the state championship and watch you guys win. So thank you, thank you very much. We're proud of you.
That's awesome. Anyone else from the school committee?
Hi, so I have, I have a fourth grade boy who loves soccer, and we went to the state championship game and a number of your other games. And there was a whole crew of fourth grade boys. I mean, like, you couldn't even contain their excitement watching you guys. It was so exciting. You have motivated such, the next generation of awesome soccer players to think that all of these people in the stands were there supporting you and cheering you on and for them to see that this, the community come together. It was really, really awesome to see. And you did that. You created that for these little boys, for this community, for all of us, and it took a lot of work, clearly. So thank you, thanks for doing that, and congratulations.
And I think you have 18 seniors this year, is that right? 18 seniors, so a lot of these guys won't be continuing next year. We wish you the best of luck in anything you do. This is definitely gonna be a lifetime memory for you, though, and just keep holding on to that. Before you go, I would love to get a picture with the-
Just one comment.
Oh, sorry, sorry, go ahead.
Just, just carry on on what Carrie had added, probably to four, three young boys looking up to you as championships, and maybe a coach or a point of view. You just, what advice would you give to them as they continue with their soccer career? You talked about bonds and trust. What other piece of advice would you give young kids who are looking at you and your success?
Um, I think it all starts with just having like a passion for the sport. Obviously, it starts at a young age. And I think the most important thing, and even for us, we would always say in Puddle, is just have fun, just enjoy the sport that you're playing. I think that's, that's the best advice I can give, because if you're not having fun, I think you're missing any of the truly enjoying the sport. And, and just like having fun in the grind and getting better over the years and creating friends and bonds along the way. It's just all part of the process, yeah, just have fun. It's just that.
Thank you.
Mr. Wells, could you introduce Phil?
Yes, you need the microphone, sorry.
Hi, sure. Hi. So, yeah, we also have Coach Phil Morris here. He came on the coaching staff last season and was with us this year. I know it was a special season for him the past two years with his son Peter on the team. Senior this year, so Phil, do you want to say a word?
It's a dream. Yeah, it's, it's been a dream for me too. I didn't play a lot, but, you know, I'm saying that with all the coaches here, we had as much fun and more than the boys on the field. You know, we've been doing this for a long time, but we go back a long way to many years ago doing a bit of coaching with Charlie, and I was nine years with the girls' team. So I just pick up on one, one point very quickly, that what advice would we give? That is first and foremost, just play a sport, whether it's soccer or baseball or basketball. Play a sport, encourage your kids to play a sport, because that's where they will get a lot of fun in their life along with other things, of course. And, and if you feel really ambitious, play as many sports as you can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And you also have Coach Pavlik, who's not with us tonight, and Coach Brada, right? And that rounds out the coaching staff. Okay. Well, congratulations. We really are glad that you're with us tonight. This is the best way that we can honestly start our meetings is by seeing a large group of students in front of us. We want a picture with all of you, and I haven't even told the school committee this though, but we do need a school committee picture to be the annuals on report. So who better to put in the picture? But the boys soccer team did this. So if we could take them, and then we'll hop into a picture, and then maybe people will open up that report and it will bring them joy. So thank you so much. If you could come up. Okay, there we go. Everybody left here. Okay. I don't know. For the rest of the meeting, I can't find out. Is anything to audio on in this room?
But let's just see, let's see. Can you just do a check?
Yes. Before we start, we're gonna do a little sound check. Is it better now? Is the, can anyone hear the echo in the room?
No, not any.
No?
Does seem better.
I'll let you know if it comes back.
I think it's back. I think it's moving. No, I think it's that. We're gonna need those again.
Yeah, I can, yeah. I muted.
Obviously, the owl and it's bush, so.
So maybe we just need- We won't use those. Okay. Okay. Thank you everyone for standing with us here. Okay, at this point, we're gonna move on to public comment. And we will start with public comment in the room and then public comment online. If anyone in the room would like a public, make a public comment, you can come up to the microphone. I don't see any, and I hear the echo again. So now there's a difference?
Yeah. Okay, let's trace it down.
Okay. All right, I am going to go to public comment online. If you can just raise one second, Grace.
Does everybody do this?
Everyone in the room is muted, right?
The owl is not muted.
Maybe it's the owl.
Oh, we need the owl.
I apologize for here.
I will, we mute the owl and let's test it.
I feel like it's back to you.
Did you mute that? Well, no, no. Okay. You gotta see what's better.
Okay, I muted the owl.
Yeah, it's unmuted.
Grace, I know you're with us. We're just having a little technical difficulty. You can hear us, so that's perfect. Hopefully, we won't have the echo in the room. I think it's done.
I think so too.
I think it's better.
Just recording, I guess. Muted, I guess.
Okay, perfect. All right, Grace, please, if you can state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to make your public comment.
Thank you. My name's Grace Grogans. I live at 1172 Lowell Road in Concord. I'm a senior, and I just wanted to let you guys know that I am going to be sending out a survey, hopefully tomorrow morning, just gauging student support and also faculty support for the, the possible solar panels in the drainage basin. I know you guys are, that's an ongoing project you're working on, so I just wanted to let you know. And I, this is sort of, I, I've been working with the solar task force on this a little bit, but this is definitely my own initiative and my club's initiative. I, I'm the leader of the Sunrise Club, and we are very interested in making this happen and working with you guys to make this happen. And I know you're looking through all of these different viable options, so I just, I just wanted to let you know about this survey that I'm sending out. But thank you, that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other public comment online? If you are online, just use the raise hand feature if you'd like to make a public comment. And I do not see any public comments, so we will move on.
We can also count how often just do, like, all get on Zoom.
We have your reference.
Yeah, we can do that, yeah.
You'd have to keep muting and unmuting individually. It's really challenging.
It's really challenging. I think we're gonna have to listen to the echo a little bit.
Okay.
I apologize for anyone at home watching. Okay, so we are done with the public comment and moving on to the consent agenda. Would anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Uh, yes. Okay, so. So the Nordic speed trip, I don't have any problems with the trip. Except I just have some questions about coaches who are full-time coaches. Are they all Coreyed?
Oh, definitely.
Okay, because I just, I noticed a couple of parent coaches, which is great. I just wanna be sure that they're all Coreyed.
Yes.
That was my only question. And then regarding donations, I just want you to know where the money goes, and that's why I may be in the future be happy to have some kind of detail on. So the, to the Rivers program, is there a revolving Rivers account? If you came into these right now, can we just pull them and get some more details for the next meeting?
I'm not sure. Can you answer any of where these donations are gonna be, how the cash flow will work?
Yeah, the, the Rivers donation would go to, there was previously a Rivers and Revolution donation account. We would just use the same account. Was there another one that I didn't hear?
Then there's also the donation for the Memorial Field padding.
That would go to a specific donation account targeted to athletics, but it would not go to the revolving fund. And we would apply it towards the purchase of that padding.
And then the last one is the Class of 1963 donation for library books at the high school.
We have, we have a library book fund, a library donation fund. We would use the same account, unless it's restricted to specific books. We would put it to the same donation account for library books.
Hello?
Thanks, Teresa.
Oh, hi.
For us, Teresa?
Oh, hello?
Hi, Teresa.
Hi, I can hear you now.
Oh, how interesting.
I, I can too.
The last thing I heard was the fund allocations from the donations.
Okay, so we did some correspondence updates since then, which I'll let the chairs decide. I don't, we didn't do anything different, and now it works.
And now it works. And Teresa, the only thing I will say is Carrie Rankin moved the consent agenda. Portwood seconded that. She has later approved.
Yeah.
Who seconded, I'm sorry?
Portwood.
Okay. All right. Correspondence, we had three pieces of correspondence at the region. One regarding a cell tower, one regarding the parking and crosswalks at the road street, and one about an error, an agenda topic. Type. Okay. All right. Okay, so I will go back to, so we received a piece of correspondence from the Select Board, sort of probing and asking some more questions about our capital plan. And I think what, for interest for all of us, I think it's signaling that we are likely going to embark upon a larger discussion about capital. I think the, we've discussed some of that. The Finance Committee in Concord has discussed a little bit of it. The Select Board has discussed a little bit about the way we have been doing capital. Traditionally, in Concord, we have a $900,000 allocation for capital every year. And we'll see moving forward if anything changes in the way the town structures that, that allocation. All the questions were answered. It was received by the Select Board, so we're trying to determine if there is need for a meeting subsequent to the memo. They initially requested one, but all of the data has been shared, so I'm trying to ascertain whether we would move that, move that meeting. So, or to come on that.
Right, and I think we might note, that's just technicality perhaps, town manager's budget, that 900.
Yeah. Um, and then I had, last night, I went to the Select Board meeting, and I made a comment as the chair. And there is a warrant article that involves the CCHS campus for the Solar Task Force. And the first time that I was made aware of that was after the town preview meeting, so I just made that statement to the Select Board. Alexa, Dr. Hunter and I met with, Mr. Banfield, he has submitted some documents to us. We're looking for the actual design of what the solar ray would look like. There, there was some discussion at the last Solar Task Force meeting about a lease payment, and that maybe they would lease the land from CCHS. Clearly, some things have been discussed without us being part of that conversation. So I just let the Select Board know that that's kind of where we sat. There, the only thing that I've seen thus far in terms of the warrant article, because it is public now, it's a $9.2 million warrant article, and about $2 million involves the high school. I think it was $700,000 for the ground mount solar that would be in the area in front of Beatty. That's what they're proposing. And then another $1.3 million for the roof. The roof is more expensive than the area in front of Beatty. And I did let the Select Board know, as with anything else on the campus, that anything would need to be approved by the school committee before it could be installed on the campus. We would need agreements, like, there's a lot to be flushed out still. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Will then a timetable for these communications emerge as a result of what you said?
Well, I don't know what's gonna happen as a result of what I said. I think the warrant article is going forward, but we haven't had any discussion at the school committee level, because I'm not sure how to facilitate the discussion without any further information than what we got in, I think, October, it was like the end of October. There's nothing else except for numbers of what the projects cost.
And the proponents are the Solar Task Forces?
Solar Task Forces, yeah.
So might I suggest, I don't know if it's appropriate to get ahead of ourselves on agenda here, but at some point, get their latest information that supports their warrant article. Give us time to look at it, discuss it, and then anticipate that we'd wanna bring them in to have a conversation with them. Is that what you're imagining?
Yeah, and I think that, you know, what I was looking for is like, what are you looking for? Like, what is it gonna look like on the campus? Where is it gonna go? You know, what does it mean? I mean, I drove up there today, and that storm basin is filled with water, which is the point of it, you know? So I don't know what else they have to bring us other than, and I understand the point. I mean, it's, they're going to town meeting to see if they can get the money to get a design, to do the project, but we still don't exactly know what it's gonna look like.
And it would be CMLP looking for bond authorization. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct. And, you know, there, there are still questions out there. There were questions from the meeting last night. It, I'm not sure how much it's gonna cost the rate care. That question couldn't be answered, because the $9.2 million would, the rate care would be paying that.
So just to get ahead of some people who've been telling us, we don't have to set the agenda. So at least can we put it on the agenda to discuss the potential logistics of moving forward?
Oh, we can put it on an agenda, but I don't have any informa, I don't have any further information other than a warrant.
But we shouldn't even be discussing, it's like a chicken and egg thing.
Yeah, on the agenda so we can have this conversation.
Yes.
Well, I mean, I think.
What is the conversation now?
What would we like to do with this pending warrant article vis a vis our role, relationship prerogatives, and so on? Absolutely.
Sure. Do nothing, do something. Yeah, my, my concern is, I believe you've, we've given a list to Mr. Banfield of data that we would want in order to put it on an agenda. So, because otherwise, I think what we're really doing is debating.
So, order, what is the list? I have not seen.
Oh, oh, I have, I said it last night, and I will take the list.
We should discuss something like that as a committee. That's what I'm trying to get to.
So last night, I was not the only chair to make a comment, and I did make, I made it.
No, but if you produce a list, we need to discuss that list as a committee. That's what I'm saying. Even if you've already sent the list, let's discuss it as a committee.
But we had a chair-to-chair meeting with the chair of the Solar Task Force, so I felt like, I felt like that he was fully aware of what we needed to put it on an agenda.
And I think those could, those determinations, I think, can be made.
What I'm hearing.
We can't really have.
As Randy say, if I have it right, is if it speaks on behalf of the committee, the committee should know what's being said on behalf of the committee.
Right, okay, so, so I'll just, I will send my remarks.
It's already out of the public domain.
Yeah, no, I'll send my remarks to committee, but I'm just gonna review the last section.
I guess, I don't think we should be having this discussion. Let's just put it.
Well, we're public, it's public right now.
I know, but we don't have it on the agenda.
But it's, this is part of my chair's report, so I think it's okay to talk about.
We can't discuss it. Anyway.
I'm just, I'm just passing all the information. That's what I thought that you had requested me to do last time. So I'm just passing information on about what I said last night. I'm happy to send my remarks. I'll just send them. Okay. So I don't think I've got anything else. I'm also liaison for the DEI Commission. They are meeting right now, so I am not at their meeting. I went to their last meeting, and there's, their agenda seemed to be the same for the entire meeting. They just give updates on what their goals are for the year. They are discussing specifically, they have two warrant articles. One about the historic district, and I, I believe it's a recommendation for changing the charge of historic, and the other is on the middle school naming. So those were two warrant articles that they'll be putting forward. I think that's all I have. Does anyone else have anything from any community that they liaison with? Quick updates?
We have set dates with the Congress Teachers Association, mid-January through very early April, a series of meetings around the contract.
Okay, and the CCTA group will be doing something similar in January. So Sharon and Carrie and I are gonna start in January with CCTA. All right, great. Dr. Hunter?
Well, thank you. Just a few updates tonight that I wanted to highlight. One is that we received word from the Department of Public Health that a grant that Nurse Lee, Lisa Koski had submitted for $35,000 was awarded. So within that is $25,000 to fund Cartwheel for this year, so we'll be able to offset that through the grant. We're really excited by that, and thank Lisa for her time and energy to put that in. We did, and I'm gonna lean to Kristin if she wants to chime in on this. We heard from Desi that the results of the tiered focus monitoring are back. We have the complete report, and actually, it was released this afternoon officially. We've seen the draft. There are absolutely no findings for corrective action in either special education or civil rights. So that's a pretty extraordinary result. Many thanks to Kristin and Angel Charles for all the work that went into the preparation, the site visit, and the hosting that happened out at the schools. Just a very successful endeavor, and that report will be made available on both the Desi webpage and on our webpages, once we get it off of our email and post it. And then finally, I just wanna know, and I let the committee know, we were starting some of this conversation. We've really had a lot of interest in the Westboro program, where the 18 to 22-year-old special education students work in a school-run retail facility in downtown Westboro. It's called the Sugar Shack. They sell a lot of sweets. I've treated myself, I live close, so I've treated myself a few times. And it really is meant to be that workplace environment for students in that transition age to be able to put skills to practice. So we're, Angel Charles and I are very, very interested in doing something like that here in Concord. We'd include the pathway students, and we've started to visit some retail property just to see what's out there, what the options might be. We're working with Bob on the finances of it all. You can apply circuit breaker, you can apply the tuitions from the kids that are tuitioning into us. So there's, there's ways we can come at this. Certainly, we're gonna bring all that to you for proposal and consideration before we execute on anything, but we're in a pretty energized mode on that right now, and excited to see what the options will be. So more to come on that. I think those are my highlights.
Awesome. Great, that's the update, really big news.
Yeah, thank you. That was a year of work. And about 150 documents. Yeah.
Which, which ones?
For Desi.
The civil rights review and the special effort of the year.
Going back to the grant, is there any way that that could assist us with fiscal '25?
Um, it's an annual grant that we applied for. Lisa's description to me was it initially started at $5,000 a year, and then more funding's been available. So we're never quite sure what the pool of money will be. It could be, the trick is the site, the timing of it, right? We're just learning now that we've got money for FY '24, so it's mid-budget. So it could be an offset, but it won't be anything we can count on ahead of time.
Okay, so it's the first hopeful look into our CBS fiscal '25 budget delta.
Uh, maybe, there's just no sure, sure thing.
Oh, exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we've got something on the radar.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Could be an option.
Okay. Thank you so much. That, that is very exciting that Launch would have that ability to open up a retail store, and that would be amazing.
So I think we might bring you more information, Sharon, and I really talk through.
We look forward to that. All right.
Sure.
Uh, all right, so now, for tonight, we are on to our K-12 math overview. We have Kristen Anderson, we have our math specialist here, and department chairs, and CMS, and CCHS. I should also say our assistant principal slash math specialist.
Thank you for being patient.
I know, thank you.
Congratulations on the talk to you.
And I think we're gonna get to a couple of microphones, because I think they'll need the hardware, the microphones.
I don't know.
We don't. Can I just move with a couple of these microphones for you guys? Here, for you and I to share.
Sure.
Yes. Hopefully, this will go back. Yeah, we can check. And just before you start, so the school committee has, you had in the drive, you have the entire presentation, and you had the report requests and the answer to the report requests. So we're looking forward to hearing from our teachers.
All right, great. Thank you for welcoming us. We're very, very excited to present, and then really, I think you intend this to be a conversation. So there are 42 slides of data that we've shared with you that'll be available on the website. We're only gonna talk about 10 of them. And we've also given you probably eight, nine-page report with a lot more data. So we're happy to answer questions. We're just gonna start by having everybody introduce themselves and their role, and where they are, and how long they've been working here in Concord. Chris, could you say that?
I'm Chris Wright, I'm the assistant principal and now the specialist at Hiller, and this is my sixth year in the district.
I'm Karen New, I'm the assistant principal and math specialist at the Alpha, and this is my second year.
I'm Julie Vassler, I'm the assistant principal and math specialist at Pearl Elementary, and this is my seventh year.
I'm Debbie Harmon, I am the brand-new math department chair, just started this, this year. And this is my 30th year in Concord. And the first time ever being in front of a school committee.
Oh, good for you.
I'm Sarah Keith LeBach, I'm the math department chair at the high school and math teacher. I teach one ninth-grade class and one junior class. This is my 13th year in the district, fifth year as department chair.
Very nice, thank you. So I've been presenting on math education for. Can we not hear them?
I don't think so.
Well, I think the owl is hearing you. Now we'll.
You might just have to reject.
No, I think we're good now, he's trying to. Okay.
Good. So I've been presenting on math education for 30 years. As you know, I was math teacher before I was administrator, and this is my first time presenting with a whole group of women in mathematics, so I'm very excited about that. We've come a long way. So. Yeah, trying to get to the next slide. So when I presented to you before about the state accountability, I pointed out that the state gave us guidelines about where we wanted to be in terms of our achievement, and that was really supposed to be in five years. And I lovely, so excitedly presented that we actually made up all the learning loss from the pandemic in one year. So all of our groups are back, or almost back, to pre-pandemic levels within five points. Average student achievement at every grade level that takes this test, so 30 through 10, is back within six points out of a 530-point scale to pre-pandemic levels. And really importantly, and I know you care deeply about this, all of you, all of our subgroups are back, or almost back, within five points to pre-pandemic levels. And so that includes students with disabilities, English language learners, students who are low-income, Black students, Latino, Asian, and multi-ethnic. So we're really excited about that. Tonight, you'll hear about achievement, but you'll also hear about our growth scores that allowed us to get to that point. All of those are within 2% to 10% of growth, which is, that 10% is, I've never seen that in 30 years of doing this.
All of those are within 2% to 10% of growth, which is, that 10% is, I've never seen that in 30 years of doing this. And it's not just CPS or the high school, it's every single school on their own bottom. So we're really, really excited about that. And so to talk a little bit more, it's Chris.
Sure. So one of the things we've been talking about is whatever, whatever we do is always within the strategic plan. So if you hit the slide, you can see the first part in the commitment of the district to multiple paths for success. And that involves employing teaching practices that are engaging. And I brought a book here, this is a good example of it. This book is called Building Thinking Classrooms in Mathematics. And this is actually a text that's using as a springboard for professional development. This is the second year. It's a, it's a class that's being led by Dr. Peter Liljov and Sarah Khan at the high school. And it's, I mean, I think it's really unique in that it's bringing together high school, middle school, and elementary school teachers to look at different strategies. We can get children to work collaboratively and strategically and problem-solving, which is very exciting. The other piece, which is always that we always use our best data to be able to determine what is going to be most ethical in the classroom. And the data points we're using are, there are actually three key points. One is STAR. The STAR is an assessment tool that's administered three times a year. And it tells teachers not only where children's ability level, but where their mastery is. Those scores will inform instruction. Those are used in tandem with math, with MCAS scores and also with curriculum-based unit assessments. So if we look at all those, we have those three data points, we'll really get a full-rounded picture plus classroom observation, plus teacher innovations of where our children are. And as Kristen's told you, the gains that we've been able to make in the past two years have really been remarkable. So that's our frame.
And I forgot to say at the beginning, if anyone wants to ask questions, it's no longer totally fair. And Karen is gonna talk a little bit about our MTSS process.
Yeah, I noticed that. So as you know, we, as a district, have been putting in place a multi-tiered system of support for our students. And the big goal there is to, is to make sure that our students are growing and they're learning. And I think what happened, you see several points throughout the year. We have these check-ins where different teams meet and discuss, you know, student data. And out of those meetings, we have them find students that are in need of targeted instruction as well as students that are ready for extra challenge and enrichment. And so on this slide, you'll see just across the district, what that could look like if we're students who are the intervention or enrichment at the different levels.
Elementary updates.
So on this slide, we're looking at our fifth-grade MCAS data and we're looking at our student growth percentile. When I look at that graph, or when we look at that graph, the vertical axis goes, it shows us the average scale score. While the horizontal graph, or I'm sorry, the horizontal axis shows us the average student growth percentile. Right now, when we look at Concord, highlighted in the blue, we are in the upper-right quadrant and that indicates high achievement and high growth.
We'll just stay on this slide for really long.
Soak in.
Not that we're competitive or anything.
I know with high schoolers, it reminds me of the scattergram and score.
Literally, I love it. I'm like, oh, yeah, so good for them.
I would like to pose a question about that slide, if I might. Because it's very impressive where we lie. Where do you, as the professionals and the leaders around math curriculum, look for inspiration in terms of other districts and what they're doing? I've long been of a mind that we shouldn't restrict ourselves to surrounding communities. There's a whole world out there. I'm just curious, how do you all think? What do you talk about when, when you're looking for ways to drive this forward that excite you? Who's out there? You watch?
Well, well, be pictured. We're all members of the NCTM, which is the National Council of Teaching of Mathematics. And they have an incredible range of resources that we can look and tap into. Interestingly, most of the folks that are in, at least at the elementary level, that are in our sort of cohort group are also also subscribers to that. So being able to hear that and then the web boards and so on to get ideas. The other pieces, at least we'll mention that all three of us have connections and other difference. And so a lot of it is, say, what are you doing with, or how do you think your kids have been responding since the pandemic? Some of it's anecdotal and conversational, but between that and then the professional journals, there's a lot of resources out there.
Good to hear.
So what we're looking at now is some newer additions to our repertoire. To complement the elementary math program, we are starting to pilot Freckle, which is by Renaissance, which also is affiliated with that STAR assessment that Chris mentioned earlier. So Freckle is a way for our students, it's really designed to reach students at their own level with differentiated instruction and practice in mathematics. So there's opportunities for us to meet our students where they're at, identify areas that need strengthening, and even accelerate some of those topics.
We should mention about everyday mathematics. We've been using it for eight years. And it's very highly rated. And we usually see a life cycle for curriculum of about 10 years. So probably in two years or something, we'll start thinking about looking around like more programmatically.
Can I ask a question about Freckle? Is it kind of like the Lexia for math, like where it puts you, like you're at your level and then it brings you along depending on what you need?
Yeah.
What do you do? Okay, it's a depth of fact.
Yep. And it's not just a math, it's ELA math.
Oh, it's everything.
So would it ultimately, like, could it replace Lexia?
It could. Lexia goes deeper.
Deeper, yeah.
They're different.
And are you, are you predominantly using these softwares in the classroom at home?
They could be used either, any of those.
Actually, the less of it at home, so I didn't know if there was more use. I mean, just again, anecdotally, one human, everybody. Or my two. Oh, yeah, I have two. And I, and I've seen, you know, so I just, is it, is it a classroom-based tool as well as a home-based tool?
Do you want to speak to that?
Our teachers can use it in small groups. If they're working with a small group, there may be another small group working on Freckle, and then they rotate around. Our students can access it from home.
Oh, yeah.
So they have the opportunity to use it at home, and it's nice for, that a teacher can see if they have and know that they're practicing skills, that they're learning in the classroom.
Yeah. And probably a great use of it is during the summer, so that that summer slide that we always see. This is probably a great way to, to address that. Our first pilot of it actually was in summer school, so it worked out really well.
And did it replace, like, Dreambox? Is that?
It replaced it, okay.
Lexia always seems better than Dreambox. That's good.
They did different things.
Yeah.
Lexia's only phonics.
Yeah, yeah.
No, yeah.
Yeah.
Much more specific.
Kids like Freckle.
My kids, my kids really like it.
Yeah.
They like Lexia because you get a certificate.
Yeah.
But they like, they like talk about enjoying.
Oh, they're using Freckle?
Yeah. Again, one initial.
Yeah. Any more elementary questions before we move on to middle school?
No, very good.
Sure you don't want to just like skip right over there?
Okay, so in looking at our data, it's not where we want to be. So our goal is to do some, put some things into place to help hopefully raise the scores. One thing that we're doing is the, we are adopting a curriculum in middle school that we're adopting a 680 curriculum. Finally, we have had a piecemeal going on. So we're, the sixth-grade teachers are piloting Envision Math for the full year. Seventh grade is gonna pilot a few units, and eighth grade currently already uses Envision Algebra. So we are very excited. The problems are very rich. The topics are amazing. Makes kids think. We also use Thinking Classroom, and so some of those are very challenging and just ways to get kids sharing ideas. And we also have STAR and MCAS to look at data for helping kids, giving kids math strategies. And then we actually test them three times a year as well, and we'll place them into math strategies for enrichment if they need it, along with Freckle. There's a lot of differentiation that goes upon and a lot of talk about the different levels of testing. Currently, sixth and seventh grade are heterogeneous. They are in, I think they're in year, seventh grade is in year two of it, and sixth grade has done it well before. I think they started the year of the pandemic. And so lots of differentiation things are going on in classroom. One of the things that we do is we, they are given kind of pre-tests at some points in the year so they can kind of decide who is ready for a little bit more of a challenge, who needs a little more support. And that challenge can look different in different classes, and it can look different on different days depending on what the topics are. Sometimes there'll be like math team-ish kinds of questions. Sometimes it's student-selected instead of teacher-selected. One thing that we're doing in eighth grade, because we, they are leveled to high school. In eighth grade currently, they have two levels, basic algebra and algebra one. I can tell you from experience right now that our basic algebra kids are using the Envision Algebra One textbook, which is not something that we've typically done in the past. So we really are exposing them to rich, rich problem-solving for algebra. Lots of things can happen there as far as differentiation and getting them ready for high school. And so I forgot where I was going with that. This is what happens when it's like seven o'clock. You're old, because you've been here for 30 years. So it's just, there's just a mishmash of things going on. I know that we sometimes have extension opportunities where they might kind of have mastered what they're doing currently and need more of a push or more of a challenge. And so sometimes it's investigate a topic that's similar to what we're doing, and it goes beyond. Or sometimes it's kind of, you know what, you've mastered that, I'm gonna give you something else to try. Sometimes it's investigative where they go on and they watch a video or they kind of do decimals activities. Sometimes it's, I call them as a teacher and I have some independent work around other kids and so I can really meet with the kids that need more of a challenge. What else? I talked to Sarah. Our hope is to get them ready for high school. I think, did I hit everything?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
When you, when you differentiate within the classroom, do you, as the instructor, do that like sort of in group work? So are you taking your heterogeneous class and creating little subsets of more like homogenous groups for leveling? And then, that's what I figured. No surprise. And then are you seeing, because one of the things that we talked about philosophically was when we were discussing de-leveling and differentiation was, it gave kids an opportunity, you know, that you weren't, that you weren't assigning someone their level at 10 years old in fifth grade. It would give them three additional years to sort of flesh out their skills for the, for a better opportunity to reach advanced-level math courses in the high school. And that makes a lot of sense to me, like that. Are you, do you see transitions and fluidity very much as a result of this in terms of like where kids are in groups? Are you seeing an upward trend of kids advancing more? Or, and do, and do those groups ebb and flow and change a lot? I know they do, like in reading groups in elementary school, you can, you know, you can be crummy at one phonics-y thing and then you're really great at something else and you're moving all around. Are you finding that in math as well?
It depends on the topic. It depends on the concept. By eighth grade, our eighth graders right now, their goal is self-awareness. So one of the things that I'm trying to do as, or we as an eighth-grade team are trying to do is have kids self-select appropriately. They all want to go to honors at the high school. And, and that's a wonderful goal, and we'll do everything we can do to get them there, to help them. But they're not always there yet, and it depends on the topic. Teachers have been giving choice homeworks, mild, medium, spicy. Same kind of thing happens on, on assessments too. I know that the sixth grade right now, along with piloting Envision, they're also kind of piloting a standard-based grading system. So they really, really work through, Envision does a nice job of breaking down exactly what standards are taught when. And so they keep track of where they're at. And one of the things that I can tell you as a department, which, I'm worried of a department meeting tomorrow, but our kids all take algebra and in eighth grade, and they're taking the eighth-grade test, which is in algebra. So in algebra, there's topics that aren't being taught that are on the eighth-grade MCAS test. So we're gonna start to look at what, what do those, what are the differences between them? And will we be ready to possibly do an algebra test instead of the eighth-grade test?
So MCAS offers that?
Yeah. But we've never been able to do the algebra test, because we always have the students on the lower end taking pre-algebra.
Understood.
Oh, interesting. Yeah, so that's gonna be something that we're gonna be looking at.
Sounds great.
So is the eighth-grade test, what is the content, what is, what is the test really?
It has some algebra skills on it. It has a lot of linear stuff, but it also has geometry on it, which we don't. Algebra, I don't teach geometry in and out of a course per se.
No.
So.
Okay. And the topic I just put up on the screen, you can see.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it would have all of those, number, functions, statistics, and probability expressions and so forth, not just the algebra topics there, functions and expressions.
That's the most interesting thing I've learned.
And it's clear, I mean, it's clear with the MCAS course, like the geometry way down, which is obviously gonna affect your MCAS results. So are you finding with teachers and visions, like how do they feel about it becoming meaning saying, wow, this is so much better? Or we really like it, we like it because of this, we don't like this? You know, at the beginning of a new curriculum, obviously, people are gonna have.
Yeah, I think they're still brushing it up.
Yeah. I can tell you the eighth-grade teachers love it. And we have been using it, I think, for four or five years with our algebra kids. And I, I think it's, it's definitely an adjustment. There's not one canon curriculum that you can use by itself. I think that going through it this year, that they've taken on a lot by using, going through the pilot of that and now looking at standard-based grading. So I, I know that standard-based grading aligns up really well with Envision, but I think it's, it's a lot going on at one time. But I, I really feel like it's worth it, and I feel like maybe next year it would be a lot easier for people that, you love it, maybe I can say that. And is there any type of online component? Like, is there like a Delta Math equivalent to Envisions where it likes, you know, say you're unsure of something. You're like, well, let me go back to my Delta Math, let me teach myself again, watch the videos, try and do it again. There's a lot. Well, I would love hate relations with Delta Math. But is, I know, but is there anything equivalent that they can do some real teaching at home? Well, the kids to actually do.
There is an online, there's an online component to it. It also, there's a lot of decimal stuff too that we can use with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanna say before we wrap up on the middle school. I know you were nervous.
Am I bragging? No, you are not. You're charming and wonderful.
I just wanna say, to me, this is a really good news story. You guys, I commend that you looked at the data. You identified precisely where we want to be, and we're responding to it. I think that is what a good educational team does. I don't, you know, and, and truthfully, like, you didn't even have, you know, it's not like we had 10 years of data. You reacted really quickly. And I think parents and kids are gonna respond really well to this. I hope, I hope that's the solution that we're looking for, and I'm sort of anxious to see the data in the next few years. But again, to me, this is a wonderful news story. This is exactly what good teams do. And just wanna make sure that And just want to make sure that the message is offered to you all.
Thank you. And even that, and I'll go a little bit further and say that, you know, in elementary school, you know, how, how far behind you're going to be in math necessarily, right? For the middle school and the high school, it was very challenging coming out of a pandemic. And, you know, and I think that we're still feeling those effects. I, I'll, I'll go to my anecdotal story. I know in my own house, I mean, there are gaps, kids have gaps that they weren't in school. They, they missed something. So, and I, and I know it feels like it was so far away. But really in the life of a, a teenage math student, it really wasn't, you know, they, they really, they missed some things. And it was no one's fault. It was just a product of the world ruined. So, so I appreciate the effort, you know, to really look at this and to go forward and make some changes to make it better for kids.
Yeah, I would second that and not just anecdotally, you know, the average math scores in Massachusetts fell twelve points, twelve percentage points. So that's enormous. And these folks have worked so hard with their teams to get us back up there. And now we're back up there and now we want to go further.
So a couple of things, yesterday I read an article by one of the public radio stations in California, K U D. And they said, there's been like a twenty-two decade decline in math, in these math scores in the United States. So this is not our problem and I just, you know, I don't want you to answer that question. I just was very interested to see that. Another thing is what does the handoff look from the elementaries to the middle school? How's that sort of work? Are kids just sort of given a placement or a heads up or?
Oh, no, there's no, it's, they're not leveled in sixth grade.
No, but I mean individual students, you know, if there's a concern or, you know, how do you communicate that between the elementaries and the middle school?
Oh, so if it's like, we'll absolutely, we'll contact the teacher, the previous year's teacher.
This is what, you know, I'm saying like, is this what you saw last year or is this something that normal? You know, I'm thinking, if somebody's struggling, I, I know when people call and say, this is, you know, a student that's flying high and, you know, why is that? So I'm just saying, how does that work?
Sure. So the nice part about wearing two hats is that you can then put on an existing principal hat while you're wearing your math specialist hat. And teams of the fifth grade teams are, we, we work closely with them to be able to say, at least children are moving up to middle school. Here are the children who really want to be sure that you're aware of. And this is separate from obviously children who may be on the IP's and may have other challenges. But we're very much in touch with the middle school. And so I think that's the piece about the elementaries. We know all the children and we share that with the middle school, which I'm sure they do with the high school.
And what's the secret to getting kids to love math?
Give them teachers like me. Math is for everybody.
I know, that's what I, I know. Try to preach that. It doesn't always work. It didn't always work. Well, great. Thank you. And I have the same question about the handoff from middle to high school too.
Well, Sarah and I are in, we're in, yeah, I'll probably try to put her before, but I'll let her present in the morning.
Can I get talking about that now or?
Wait, no, get your app. Are you sure? I don't want to interrupt.
Hi, everybody. All right. So we're starting off, sorry to, I know we have the screen, the slides up here, but you also gave us a bunch of stuff. And that's, I'm looking at this one from middle school.
So some of the slides are starred and we are focusing on the starred slides in our presentation, which is, I'm going to estimate that are ten of what is.
No, I'm asking, am I allowed to ask?
They're ready for anything.
So this one, I don't know if you guys can see it, but it's, I know the bar graph means it looks a little worse than the actual numbers. But if you see, there's like, I think that's a whole year and stuff.
What's that one?
What slide number? It says percentage of grade six to eight received As or Bs.
Oh, it's in the report. It's now in the slideshow.
Yeah, yeah. Not in the slideshow. And I was wondering, like every year, not all huge, but every year there was, you know, six, seven, eight, six, seven, eight. Due to every indication why seven things, uh, down here.
The seventh graders. It's very different from a sixth grader and an eighth grader.
And I didn't know, is this just a math? Is this a thing?
Yeah, there's a math now.
And I was just wondering, you know, it was a.
And is it unique to Congress?
Right. That I don't know. In all honesty, I don't know that.
I just know from watching Carlisle, we, I know we changed our math and I'm not a, don't know. I'm not an expert about any of it, but I know they're, they were talking about it. The current spiral, that was hardly even. So I just didn't know. You guys have, as you said, like we, we had like books from here and books from there, teachers. You know, either picking, you know, so they're not trying to go to like a more, I don't know, streamlined curriculum that everybody's using. So I don't know.
I also think from six to seven, there's a, a level of abstraction that kind of puts you, it's, it's a big jump sometimes. And that might be it too.
Okay. Are you, you know, are you just?
That chart of the larynx.
Thank you.
All right. So we're looking at the same chart that shows these student growth percentile versus the scale score. And we're, you know, we're pretty happy with that position. We want to be in the fifth grade spot though. So the, there have been a few different interventions that have been adopted over the past couple of years. The calculus project, we have, I'll talk about this a little bit later, math essentials and geometry essentials, which are courses paired with our grade blended class. You can see on the, the program of studies sequence chart there that students who are taking blended can concurrently take math essentials or geometry essentials. Those are done based off of eighth grade teacher recommendations. So Deb and I are going to be talking really frequently coming up, you know, after winter break. As teachers are making those recommendations for the following year. But in a nutshell, math essentials is a, so both of them need just twice a week. So they're paired with the health and fitness class. So they're, they're like little mini half math classes. Math essentials is more like remedial support for students who might struggle with the pacing of blended. Maybe need some previewing of concepts and a lot more practice just during the week. And then geometry essentials is really for those high flying blended students who maybe in eighth grade or just middle school in general weren't either mathematically mature or socially mature enough to successfully complete Algebra One as a ninth grader and then advance into geometry, either enriched or honors of the ninth grader, which that will get them on the track to reaching calculus as a senior. So if they take geometry essentials concurrently with blended in the ninth grade year and they are successful with those two courses, ideally they would go on to, in their sophomore year, enriched Algebra Two, which then would get them to enriched pre calc, which is, that's what I teach junior years. And from enriched pre calc, it'll open up a lot of doors. They can take AP, AP calc. They can take, of course, it's grade dependent, but we're giving them those opportunities that they would otherwise have had. So we're just in the second year of the implementation of those interventions. I think another thing that will help specifically with MCAS scores, and you can see from the other side that we're not showing here that our SAT scores, ACT, our AP scores have been really consistent over time and all at really high levels. But we're always looking for ways to improve our teaching and improve our students' learning experiences. So starting January first, we've been budgeted, we're, we're getting licenses for all ninth grade and tenth grade students to use a product called EduLastic, which is an online assessment tool that students, I mean, the teachers will begin incorporating into lessons probably after midterm and exam week, so that the students can really get ready for that experience from May. And it will specifically target, we did some work in the data team this fall, which through that analysis, we identified which strands, in particular, students across the board, sophomores showed weaknesses in. It was geometry, which by the time they're in their spring of tenth grade, they haven't seen geometry for about a year. So that made sense to us. And all the statistics and probabilities. So those are the two primary areas of growth that we, through that analysis of data team, we, we identified we're excited about not just reteaching some of those concepts, spiraling them in through the lessons in spring, but also using that EduLastic tool to give them sort of a, a real experience with those types of questions, two-part question, this is multiple choice. We have a wide variety of, of different types of questions that they can be exposed to. So I think, I think we're headed for a big break this year.
Questions about high school? Yeah, I'm going to ask Sarah to spend just a little time, Chris waved the book, but you folks have transformed math instruction at the high school. And I just want you to spend a minute talking about what that looks like because it's amazing.
So I really have to give credit to one of my colleagues, Sarah Khan, for sort of spearheading this. And a few years ago, she, I think she listened to some podcast on Paul's and then read his book. And she's really inventive with the way she grades, graded her equity practices and also the building thinking classroom practices. And so starting last year was one of the PD paths. And I'd say the majority of our department incorporates one, two or three of these strategies. The most, oh, this is really exciting. We get, we're getting, they're actually in our cafeteria.
The whiteboards.
Whiteboard. I know it doesn't sound exciting, but it really is. But right now in all of our math classrooms, we have ten classrooms, we have whiteboards across the front of the room. And this is a big practice of building thinking classrooms where students stand up and they display their work so that other students and the teacher and everybody can see their work. Essentially, students can't hide and they can kind of shy away and not work. And students who are working are learning, right? And so their work is displayed around the room. And so now we have, it's going to begin and we will run winter break, but it will take a little bit of time to get them all of in the classrooms where we have the same identical whiteboards across now the back of the rooms and on the sides of the rooms. So we're going to be surrounded by whiteboards and students will be able to just, I think it's going to like.
You told them last year, yeah.
Yeah, you were there last year and you talked about.
Yeah, so right now we have temporary.
They're like, yeah, they're like, just like.
These are like legit, like sticky paper that the floor can.
Amazing, like what they're covering the walls, they're just, they're going to be seen, they're going to be seen once they're permanent. So all of us are going to be able to do that in the classrooms from now going forward. But then we, yeah, I talked about this last, last, last year, we do randomized seating, which gets students collaborating and talking. So most math students incorporate multiple strategies from the building thinking classrooms.
Yeah, and just about, we watched the building with the deeper learning consultant, Brian and Katie and I. And her conclusion at the end was the math classrooms are the most active, engaged, loud. The kids are all up, they're debating problems, they're grabbing teachers and going, hey, we're disagreeing about this. I mean, and she, she was really taken back that is not normally where you find the most robust, rich environments is in the math environment. So kudos, it really stood out and really good.
Exciting. I mean, just me personally, I started doing these maybe just two years ago. And I see a lot of improvements in just the way my students are communicating, right? And, and they're communicating about math, they're absorbing it. And that's, I think, has been really big.
There is a certain.
Yeah, it's very exciting. And I think that, you know, fix and talking about it, and I shouldn't say that even since they write on the desks with the dry erase boards, which I love because like they're active, the teacher can see what's happening. And the fact that the teachers have been so reflective about what's working and it's kind of spreading like wildfire through the math department, which I think is great. We have, I happen to have a few children and math has really changed in the ten years in my school. This has been ten years. And I think that it's just great to see that reflective practice. And because, because you know, I mean, the scores are great and like, oh, look at our students, they're so wonderful. But you're always looking for what else you can do. So we certainly appreciate that. I have a question about the mark. So the mark still is in existence. Okay, so can students, is it a drop in now or is it a schedule in? Is it?
They can still drop in, but the, the primary difference is that there is not a math teacher schedule at the mark. Right? That was part of the negotiation last year. We now teach the flex blocks. So that's, there isn't a math teacher there, but there.
And maybe just for the rest of the committee, can you just talk about what the mark is?
It stands for Math Resource Center. So you can think of it as a math tutoring center. There are two full-time math special ed tutors in the room. So students can be assigned through their IP, they can be assigned math support in the mark. So they might go there once a week, twice a week, three times a week, whatever the student needs. And they work individually with those tutors. And then we have usually two additional tutors that work with the drop-ins. Or sometimes as department chair, I will be approached by one of the counselors about a student who has had, you know, extensive absences and, you know, maybe they've missed some instruction. So to get them back on their feet and fast, they need a couple of weeks of scheduled time at the mark. So it's not necessarily, and that actually happens fairly regularly. We like to, instead of moving students down a level, we like to pursue additional support, flex, time with the teacher and even mark assigned time before really considering the movement of levels. So the mark can be used in a lot of different ways. And I do know some students that drop in and it's just, you know, it's a, it's a confined space. There's, there are four adults in the room. It's a very, very active place. Students love it. And so they do drop in, but it's not as common as it was in the past because there isn't a math teacher there. But what we're finding is the flex.
The flex really is a name changer.
It's a name changer. Students love it, teachers love it. I mean, I shouldn't say that. It's my experience is that the two, the teachers that'll talk to me about it, they, they like it. Because their students are signing up for it and it's kind of like an individualized marketing experience with their own teacher. So it's different at the high school now, but I think really good things are happening. It just doesn't look like it did last year.
Yeah. Anyone else have any high school questions?
So assessments, has that changed over the years? It's sort of that, you know, didn't do well on the test, what, what options are there for a student?
So we don't have, so over the years, yes, it's changed. And I'm assuming you're not talking about the standard assessments, it's like individual class assessment.
Oh, yes.
So what we do, what's standard in our department, and we don't have a standard practice throughout the department, but what we do is each course-like group must agree upon rating practices and different test practices. So I can give you some examples, but it would differ for each course-like group. One example, I can give you the, the two examples from that I'm teaching, I'm teaching honors geometry. So I'm, I know in the ninth grade academy, I only teach once a week though. But all the ninth grade, all the honors geometry teachers incorporate the same practices. So we have, for each unit, we have one to two quizzes, usually one, as a formative assessment. And then at the end of the unit, we have a bigger summit of assessment, like a unit test. If a student does better on the unit test, then the one or two quizzes that led up to that, then the teacher will go back and override and match the score. And so here's, just about a week ago, I graded the last unit's test and compared it to the quiz scores leading up to that, the quiz scores leading up were, this is just one unit and one class. But it was a C plus, average, or let's say median, they're usually closely related on the quiz. And then by the time the students came to the flex blocks, came for extra help, you know, we reviewed the conflict in class and rooms, et cetera. The median was almost a ninety-three for the unit test.
That's a lot of math.
That is a huge improvement. I was so impressed with my students. And so although my hands got tired in going and changing all the grades, it was really exciting and I think motivating for them. So that is one example of a practice for, now it also differs by grade because we're looking at it from like two structures, right? They're coming in from a very different experience in middle school where their grades in middle school are not determining which colleges they go to. And then, you know, the ninth graders are pretty close to the middle school experience. But then by the time they're seniors, we need to get them ready for what they're going to. We need to get them ready for what they're going to encounter when they go to a a a different place, right? Um, so I teach juniors and what we do is each quarter allow them to drop the lowest quiz. And this quarter, we're also experimenting with one time they can override, not each unit test. But one time can override a quiz based off of a test grade. So we're not doing it as frequently as what you're going to see in ninth grade, that's primarily because the students are older and I mean. To them, them to be a little bit closer to that college experience. So we've we got a lot of discussions in the math department and back at the last department um meeting agenda. About fifteen to twenty minutes of the agenda was devoted to this exact topic, so we're we're brainstorming, trying to figure out like. What we value in the department in terms of grading, um, we're talking about a lot of L T meetings, reading for equity and orbiting and trying to purpose what that's like.
Good, Karen, um, so I have a couple of questions, I am, I'm curious, one of, and I'm not sure how like fair these are, so. One is, when you look at the comp, obviously ninth graders work conqueror and Carlisle come together. Um, can you speak a little bit to like a different, what you're seeing in between readiness, between conquer student and Carlisle student? Um, and if whether anecdotally or um data, I don't know if you have any on it, I don't even know if we would have data. Um, but then the question is, do you know what curriculum Carlisle is using for middle school? And how does that compare to, I guess, what we have been using and then also what we're moving to?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that.
Yeah, 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 I agree with that.
And then, yeah. So luckily, Carlisle also does the star assessment and so we can get all that data, which is great, so we know exactly uh where they are. Um, in terms of the student's achievement and growth scores and everything on every individual area of math. So we're talking a lot through the data, um, but also just talking.
Yeah, that's great.
I think before I answer this, it's important to acknowledge that like, I can't remember at what point this happened, but we've gone from. Five ninth grade math classes to three, okay, so that has occurred over the past maybe four-ish years. Um, so I can speak anecdotally from the perspective of an honors geometry and enriched geometry teacher. Um, you asked specifically about sort of the differences in readiness between conqueror and Carlisle. So I would say, um, anecdotally, Carlisle students generally seem better prepared for the rigor. Um, when being placed into enriched or honors geometry. And that has, that's been my experience and my colleagues' experience as I've been there thirteen years. So, um, not sure how much in depth I can talk to that, but like it's, it is. Um, across the board in those two classes, um, Carlisle does seem to be better prepared for like the the rigor.
And then Kristen and and Debbie, so are you, do you feel like this new curriculum that you're. Putting into place will help solve for that or what is your?
Yeah, sure, and I'll just remind everyone that Carlisle doesn't have uh any of the subgroups that Concord has, sure, so.
This is one, one, I just think it's interesting because obviously middle school is where. There there is like a dip in the data and I think as well, Lex's point, I think it's amazing that we're addressing it, I mean, that was my big concern looking at it. And it's hard, it's like even hard to give much feedback because you guys have been really taking it on and thought really carefully about what to do with that, so that's amazing.
Okay, that I think, yeah, I think also it is important to, I talk to my students a lot about like the types of experience that they've had before coming into my class. Classes are really small in Carlisle compared to Concord, so I think that although I'm answering your question, like. Um, a lot of different variables are at play, so to get really down to the truth as to why, you know, this is what people are thinking. I think, you know, there's there's a lot going on, um, and it would be difficult to, it's not me who can tease those out.
Yeah, absolutely. One question on Carlisle, sorry, do you guys, do you level math? Do you have leveled math in middle school?
They have invented.
Same thing, the same, same level, okay, cool, great, thank you.
Yeah, in a spiral and curriculum, yeah, yeah. And the number of students coming from Carlisle is, you know, it ranges, but it's sixty, sixty-five, so it's not. Statistically, it's hard to. Talk about it because you can't really compare one whole class to one whole class. Because there're not, there's not even a hundred kids, so it really matters who the kids are in each group. So one year can be stronger, one year can be the same, you know, like that, there's a lot of variety.
Yeah, but I think she's saying over the years, like she's seen a consistent trend.
Yeah.
Um, and then my last question is when you hear like through senior year. Um, kids going off to college, again, this might not be a very fair question, but like anecdotally, what are you hearing from your alumni about how they feel about math in college? Are they ready, do they feel ready for it, do you get feedback?
I just just said this one week, C C S versus um New South before heading over here and I ran into, it happens to be like. The night of this, the kids are home from break, our colleges, so they all show up and I had conversations with them and I'm like, how's it going? Um, I think that we very much well prepare them, I think in a lot of cases, they they probably just like a little bit easier. Um, and it could just be they're taking through classes, you know, but um, yeah, overwhelmingly, they they seem to be doing great, but I think that, you know, when you look at those. Big exams, those standardized tests, like our kids do really well, so they're going to great schools and having. A lot of success and um they seem to be well prepared.
I just have one more, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
When you think about um where students are um broken down in these, I'm looking at this, that that looks up, yeah. Um, in these courses, um, you know, not exact numbers, but like how, what's the percentage of students in this, like? In the different levels, if you can say, like, is it like a third, a third, a third or about or, um, I have it here.
I think it's in the forty-four and forty-five.
Yeah, forty, forty. Oh, it's right here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's wrong my question. It's before it's just for ninth graders, so so we've got forty, forty and twenty roughly, um. But there is a fair amount of movement, you know, we don't want, we don't like to say that our students are trapped. Yeah, right, and that's really the whole goal of. Of the ninth grade experience and blended and these interventions that we're offering that is to really. Eliminate that as much as possible and so it would be interesting, I don't, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but um. Our, I was looking at the data last week, our AP Statistics class, which is, has grown a lot. Over the past um three, four years, um, Mark Krantz and Mike Carrato teach it and and we both do an amazing job, and so I think it's gained popularity. Um, and those classes are about, the students from those classes are roughly half. I might be a little bit off, but roughly half enriched students, so you know, having so many enriched students be able to access AP stuff and also. I I haven't looked at the A B Calc or B C Calc data lately, but I I was looking at the staff data last week because we wanted to become even more accessible. As though we're trying to figure out ways, you know, how many kids are accessing it now, how many are staying and successful in it versus how many have had to drop the course? A lot of students are staying and are successful and how can we make that an even better experience for our enriched students? So I don't have your answer um beyond ninth grade, but um. Yeah, I guess that's, I don't know, they, but I know it's it's pretty fluid and we want to.
I like, no, I like hearing that, I think that's really great, that kids are moving, because I mean, that's the whole purpose of not deleveling in the middle school is to.
Right.
Help kids make sure that they.
And we even have some students who are taking, who sort of showed some maturing in blended last year. Um, but didn't start off the year in geometry essentials, and so we have a handful of kids who are taking Algebra II. And as the tenth graders and currently taking geometry essentials. So we're trying to work with students because we know that that they do mature at different times.
Great, thank you.
Other questions for Sarah?
Yeah, I think the description about student homework and it was this joke quote, you have to describe this mild, medium, spicy. And I I think that's an example where language matters and it allows students to really kind of, and participate in homework. Actually, like describe that, I'm just curious, is that, are those terms that you actually use?
Yeah, yeah, and um, I know that um the sixth grade teachers too. Um, on their tests, they even use mild, medium and spicy.
That's our core, I I was just a, you know, example where language matters, I really like that.
Things just got a whole lot more.
So now you're all spicy about math, right?
Like math, you go with spicy, because it's spicy.
Anyone else?
This has been very helpful.
Yes, really helpful, appreciate it.
And not only thank you for being here, thank you for the prep that you were.
Yes, yes. Yeah, we appreciate all the work that you did on this, I know it's a little stressful coming first school thing, hopefully it was not a painful experience and it was a great experience. Tell your colleagues, like, oh, it's so good to be, let's see a bunch of high school fans, it's really fun, um, so.
Yeah, there was a time when they were in the courtroom and we were the intimidated parents.
Exactly.
I'm I'm still that, I know.
So, so this is more for you, the um curriculum maths.
Yep.
Don't really seem to be up to date. And some are not even populated by K through three for any math.
K through three is connected to everyday math, yeah.
No, no, but I'm saying if I go here, there's no, there's no content in the maths themselves.
Oh, on the website?
Yeah.
This is back to our, our switch over the website.
No, no, it's important to know that Atlas has two phases to it, one is public and one is the educator view. The educator view is very deep and the kind of facing one is a little more.
I'm talking about parents, so.
So we can look at what's available, we might be able to release more.
And if you can like at least put these presentations up, I don't really see the ones from last year.
They're in the teaching and learning under reports, yeah.
Okay, because, yeah.
We, yeah, so these are definitely going to go up, we wanted to talk about them.
On the elementary sites, they go here to get the curriculum. To parents and then there's nothing to see really, so either we should not make this a public portal, you know what I'm saying?
There was just a link missed because K to five was all connected to everyday math.
Well, that'll check in. Yeah, 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 happy to do it. Um, another thing I wanted to point out about the presentation tonight and I'll just give you an example. Um, is this is probably the first time you've seen data from our data platform, our new data platform, so. This kind of um graph, you know, comparing us to twenty-four other districts. This would have taken me at least a day, total full work and. This was generated in like maybe five minutes, so yeah, it's fantastic, so you know.
Really helps, it's like a great visual to like.
Yeah, right away.
And that's just the tip of the iceberg.
I know, it's really cool.
Will this be also publicly testable, some parts of it, the dashboard?
Um.
The community or no?
These graphs will be, but not the blue and you can ask it anything you want, yeah, we're still.
I know.
Piling it and rolling it out.
Learning.
Hopefully someday you can go and look at your own child's data, I just wanted to point out.
It would always be limited, though, it's not a, it's an education.
Yeah, what you can see in Aspen right now for your kid, you wouldn't be able to see in open architect, yeah. So it's just more user-friendly, so I just wanted to also point out, like, this is the item analysis for the high school, what we do it for all of the schools. And we can sort of see very quickly um where our strengths are, where we need to work, you know, in the example, uh, like the middle school, we were talking about that before. We saw that um. The geometry was lower, you know, significantly lower than the other areas, like that's ten percent. Um, and in talking with the teachers, we discovered that, you know, the the geometry units weren't taught until after the MCAS. So now Debbie described putting in the geometry spiraling updating. So that's the kind of information that we can get so quickly now and it's so useful, we call it data to inform instruction. Um, and so now we're giving it to our teachers and it's really, really helpful, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, and I just want to end by saying like kudos to all of these ladies because, you know. You worked out a standard. I think it's been something to, in three years, look at a face of a ten-year-old, a fourteen-year-old, a seventeen-year-old and say. Why don't you know what kids your age used to know three years ago? And having to backfill, you know, three years of partial. It's fantastic, so and they figured it out.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. Please go enjoy your evening or go to bed, like it's time for bed. The life of a teacher. Alright, um, that was great, thank you so much, Chris, for putting that together and going through our report requests and everything else, so I think. I think we've got a structure that that works for um data and business and such like that.
Yes.
And that's tonight's morning question.
There, they'll be put on our website, yeah, yeah, yeah. Alright, so moving on to the regional budget, uh, we discussed this at our last meeting, tonight is the night we are going to vote the budget, so this is. The point, but if you have any other questions, this is just the region, if you have questions on the budget, please ask them now, so we're prepared to vote. Or comments?
We have some questions. So just a question about the process, so we're going to vote for a warrant article and that, a number we cannot exceed. But we can have further discussions about the budget after tonight, this is the end.
No, 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 it's not the end, we're voting the number for the war.
Right.
I would hope that we can keep it on the agenda so that administration can continue to update us on. What are resources coming in that are different than anticipated, um, what are assumptions that might. Or improve in terms of our need to seek, seek funding over guideline? Just keep it on agenda and there's some nights we may have things to discuss, other nights we we don't, but it'd be wise for us to keep in front of the sun.
Because there is data that you do get in January, if I'm remembering correctly.
There's always some in January from the state, sure. Okay, cherry sheets of them out and then there might be unexpected retirements or things like that. And we are slotted for in January to have our quarterly reports and transfers, so, you know, maybe.
Yeah, Bob's already.
Yeah, Bob's on that, so so I think that, you know, just generally, we'll just keep it on the agenda.
Alright, and just a semi-related question about budget books, do we have any um? Timeline for that at all?
Bob's on.
Yeah, I I thought we had one more budget workshop, is that correct?
We were hoping to use, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, we were gonna use that workshop to get feedback from all of you on the budget book, Billy?
Okay, sounds good. Perfect, we can a hundred percent schedule that. Karen, I'm gonna ask one thing, so I can't find it, um, there is one more budget workshop scheduled?
For the.
Is there?
On the budget.
I think there is, I'm just.
I don't remember the date now.
Oh my, hold on, it's.
So while she's looking at, after we vote tonight, can we just post the budgets as we voted?
I did slides, yeah.
You know, the slides and the full budgets.
And the full budgets.
Right, the line, yeah, yeah.
So I do not believe we have another one scheduled, I think what we decided was initially what we would schedule through um. The presentation, the initial presentation, and then we would schedule them as needed as we had more information from FinCom.
We're, we're happy to share like what what we see as um things that should be included in the budget workbook, I also have looked at the prior workbook. Um, and solicit feedback electronically, but um, you know, we we're also, I think, happy to come for a workshop before one of the school committee meetings to. Present ideas and get feedback on it.
Can you get that scheduled in January? And Bob, did you say before, like you were shooting for, I I don't want to put words in your mouth, February or am I making that up?
We, yeah, we'd like to have um the budget firmly, pretty firmly established, we can certainly talk about. Uh, what the content is without having the budget. Finished, um, and we can start working on it, like if we're working with um some of the data that we have. For example, if we were to include a list of our bus inventory, that's not going to matter um necessarily if the budget number changes, there might be other things if we have schedules. Like a line item budget that could change, we'd have to re-republish, so. But if we can agree what's going to be in the budget workbook, we can do some, at least get some of that. But if we can agree what's going to be in the budget workbook, we can do some, at least get some of that started even before the budget's finalized. I don't know if I'm talking loudly, but I'm having a little bit trouble hearing, so that's why I'm talking loudly.
Great.
I like it.
You said the bus word, always uh one that gets my attention. Um, are we to assume that the budget proposal calls for replacement of the two two thousand eight vehicles?
Uh, the two oldest vehicles in each district that unidentified uh were most in need of replacement.
So just going by age, age and mileage here.
Um, well, the ones that you're looking at, two thousand and eight, we have an order that we placed at the end of FY twenty-three, uh, so those should be arriving and they would replace the oldest two. Um, we placed an order already FY twenty-four, um, but that'll replace the next oldest two. So then we should be getting into the next era of items. And two thousand, two thousand and eight's are, you know, those are well past useful life.
So we are completing the replacement of the twenty-seventeens then according to your schedule.
Um. Yeah, I, I would have to take a look at the schedule. By the time we place the order for twenty-five, we'd likely receive it, place it at the end of the year. You know, ma- maybe, maybe in late in FY twenty-five at the earliest. So then we're looking at close to nine years. Old vehicles and we have a, I think we have a large number for two thousand seventeen. I don't have that in front of me, but um, I believe we had a large number of vehicles that we purchased at the same time in two thousand seventeen. Is that what you're seeing?
Fourth purchase catch-up year.
Because of the.
High school start time?
Yes.
Yeah. And that was a separate warrant article.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And just for the budget book, I don't know if we're targeting trying to have it ready, but is the publication March seventh? I'm looking at the. Is that written stone or is that kind of a placeholder? I don't know.
No, I believe that is the date and it comes to us via the townhouse, so um it is the date.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it'd be nice to have them by the publication.
We, we can shoot for that. We will have uh more staff on board by then, which will, will definitely help too.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to our action items. We have two. We have uh the first is to vote approve the FY twenty-five CCRSD budget. And you have a memo from Bob that was attached to the agenda and there's motion language in there. I would answer to a motion if someone would like to read them.
And um edit the year to FY twenty-five. That's a typo.
Anyone up for the challenge or should I just?
I, I guess I can do it.
Go ahead, Alexa.
Um, okay, um. Sorry, I can't do it.
I move that the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee vote to approve the CTRSD FY twenty-five budget in the amount of thirty-nine million eighty-five thousand three hundred and one dollars and the result in contract assessment of twenty-six million two hundred and twenty-five, two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars and Carlisle assessment of eight thousand ninety, eight million ninety-two thousand sixteen dollars and to further approve the accompanying draft warrant article language for town meeting. Okay, move second.
Uh, second.
Any further discussion?
So just looking at the supporting math on this, uh, the uh offsets not included here, uh, anticipated revenues give us uh confidence in the thirty-nine million number?
Yes, the assessments are net of the thirty-nine million uh to arrive at the two towns' assessment. I, I don't know if that was your question, but that's why they don't total at thirty-nine million.
And then when appropriate, we'll vote a separate warrant article for Carlisle County meeting?
Uh, they don't ask for us to do that. They, they put that in the warrant themselves. They ask us what the assessment is and we provide that.
Anyone else? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on to the amenities building, um, you again have the warrant article in front of you that's attached to the agenda and there's motion language in that.
I can do that.
Okay, go ahead. I move that the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee adopt and approve the votes presented tonight as written related to the construction of the amenities building and the associated borrowing and notification to town select fourth. And we have second. Alexa, Anderson quietly seconded. I'm saying that for a minute, sorry. And any discussion?
I have some discussion.
Yep.
And it's all just questions that are not uh overly a little bit of formula.
Okay, that's okay.
I know that I'm just, I'm not good with the language. I know Carlisle had a concern about how pay for this.
Yes.
And I, I just didn't talk a little bit to our town administrator who said uh, because I think they had asked, they wanted to pay upfront and then I answered, tell me. Because you guys are borrowing and because of part of the regional, we can't sue them.
So we'll go back to, so at the FinCon meeting, um, Carlisle had about, I would say, like, ten questions and that was one of them was can we pay upfront and we were going to get advice of council. That was our homework to do today.
We did do, we did do that. Do, do you want me to address that now?
You're very loud.
I, I can't, I'm having trouble hearing uh people. That's why, is this better? But I'm not hearing anything now, so I, I guess I'll just let you know what I, can you hear me? Maybe somebody give me a thumbs up? Okay. Um, and I, I can't hear anything, so I'm just going to tell you what, uh, we consulted, I consulted with um the Associate Commissioner of Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Um, they're responsible, hi- his team is responsible for regional school governance. Um, and I did talk about the request. Our regional agreement um governs how we allocate um and assess the two, two member towns. Um, and um, we need to follow the regional agreement, which specifies that we um assess two both towns in the same way. So if we did borrow for this, um, we, we would need to, we, we can't just assess upfront to Carlisle and do Concord differently. Um, what he did suggest, uh, I think is something the town of Carlisle um is aware is an option and is contemplating, um, which is to place the funds into a um capital stabilization fund at the town level. Um, and so, you know, Carlisle could put the money there and then pull from that stabilization fund uh to pay for uh its assessments and just apply it towards its assessments in future years. So that is an option that the town's aware of. Um, I think they preferred to just hand off the cash and be done with it. Um, but they can kind of achieve the same goal by putting it into the stabilization fund. Uh, now I, now I can hear. I don't know what happened, but.
So this is the total cost is two point three.
Yes.
So why is Concord voting for that number?
So the total cost is two point three, so we would have to.
Oh, we should.
Well, we should.
Then it's broken up to the assessment. Bob's ready to answer.
Yeah, you, you, you're not approving the two, three, you're approving, uh, you'll, you're approving uh us borrowing that. Um. You're approving the regional district um borrowing the two point three mi- four million and then we would then uh assess you for that.
Is that in the warrant article?
Uh, that is down below, um.
Yeah, often it's in the informational section that goes under the warrant article so that Congress can see how much it is to them.
So I think we need to disclose that.
That, that's straightforward, that, um.
I don't think it needs to be.
But the, the only piece of that, uh, just to be clear, is that um if I list an amount, um and it's based on this year's percentages, as future years happen and student enrollment changes, that can shift a little bit. I mean, so what I would provide would be an estimate based on the current year. Um, I can also do, do a pro forma. I can show you what I shared with um with the town finance committee and at the town administrator's request. Um, if you have a minute, I'll just share that on my screen.
But this is always how you have to do it. And then actually in the box underneath where it explains the article, it, then we then explain how much it is to Concord.
Right, but I just went in the newspaper to get, it's going to be one point seven something or what is it?
Bob's got it up first.
Yeah, so, so this, I have it on screen. I can just type it while you're looking. Like, if I was to take the um, the total principal, um, conquered would be two point three times conquered. One, seven, eight, eight, two, eighty-eight, and Carlisle would be um, well, the difference.
I'm impressed with your sales skills, Bob.
Got the million, Bob.
This is, this is, this is the minimum bar. Um, so that would be the principal. The payments would be more over time because you'd have to include interest. And so you can see over time, um, when you factor in what the interest would be, and this is an estimate. We don't know what the rate will be until we borrow, but four point seven five is kind of the current rates. Um, you know, there's some chance rates go down. I don't know if the borrowing rates go down, but um but this is current information. Um, so we would, in that box that Dr. Hunter noted, we would come up with some way to describe this in more detail. The other thing is the um, I, I want to just say is that our bond council um gave us the language for the school committee vote and asked us to follow it to a T. And our bond council's aware that when we work with the town, that they'll have some say in how the article's crafted. Um, you know, as long as it authorizes us to borrow, we can add um information in that informational box to, to give more detail. So um, next step would be to send this, you know, we, when we submitted ours last year to the town, they, they had some edits as well, so. Um, but we can certainly add more information on what the impact is to each town.
Yeah, you have subject to town council review and approval. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right there. Okay, so the chair has the number of her fingertips and.
Yeah.
That will be a different. Well, I mean, this will be now become, you know, the Concord portion versus the Carlisle portion.
So that one point seven eight eight.
Yes. So everybody has two point three in their head already.
Yeah.
In Concord.
Right, yeah. I, I can, I can probably, we can probably word that, say, you know, this, the, the share based on today's percentage of student enrollment. Um, and I maybe even show the numbers is, this would be the breakout of principle and maybe with some sentence that explains that's subject to changes in enrollment.
You would just borrow next summer or something if this were to pass, right?
Um, sorry, I didn't hear that.
You would borrow next summer if this, if this passed.
We, we would borrow, um, right, we would have to wait until it's approved to town meeting and um. Uh, actually, I don't, I don't know if we would borrow right away. Depends, depends whether um, what the cost of the design is uh versus the construction. Um, so we, we would need to think about that. Um, but we would, the larger cost is for the construction.
Yeah. Okay. That's enough.
I think before we, we want to know what the bit of the construction is before we borrow.
Any other questions on this?
The, the confident assumptions here are that uh this will pass code with a variance and that uh our impermeable surface considerations are met.
Yes.
Yeah, both of those are vetted already through the, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion, move second, and I'm, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, and with that, I would move to adjourn the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee and Concord Public to same session. Thank you so much. Happy New Year. Enjoy the nation and thank you all. Okay, Sharon, that year. See you next year. Which is my favorite thing to say to people like this. See you next year. Does anyone need a break or should we just keep continuing?
What I see.
Anyway. All right. It's exactly twenty minutes that I just. All right. I appreciate them a minute. Yeah. Yeah, it's like. Yeah, I think that's all. Okay, so with that, um, we're going to be doing some more um process for our CPS budget. Um, we've gotten a good deal of attention to this budget. Um, we are at a smaller delta at CPS, I think.
Eighty-seven thousand.
Seven, seven. Um, and I'd like to have everyone a final opportunity to ask any other questions. Fed out any other thoughts that they have.
What I said last time regarding.
Oh, God, what was that?
No, 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 regarding the regional budget. We're just voting a warrant article tonight.
Yes.
And it's not the end of conversation.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Took me a minute, sorry.
I was like, I, I thought you meant like last meeting. I'm like, I can't remember that.
Alexa, you had my questions.
I did. Um, you know, and it's funny, I.
Have those.
Find them. Um, it's funny that you said that because I looked for them for a minute. Uh, if you could pull them up, I, I did vet them or I did.
Did.
Oh, you know why? You sent them through my personal email.
I, I, I think, I think Court's, I thought Court's questions were related to capital.
I said, and I don't expect those answers. Of course I said.
No, no, no. Yeah, I, I know, and I talked to them at the beginning.
Right, you are.
Or sent them a few days ago.
They were all capital.
Yes.
Okay.
Then in the next agenda item. Yeah, and I apologize for, I didn't find, well, I sent them, but I can't find them.
Okay, thank you.
Um, any other discussions on the FY twenty-five operating budget?
All right, so let's move on to capital. Um, or if you want to take us through those questions, I don't have my personal email pulled up.
Bob, do you have them in front of you or do you want me to pull them up and recite them? What's the easiest? I don't care how you go through them, but if you can touch on them to the extent you can, that'd be helpful.
It'd be helpful to me to have somebody read them, because I don't. I think we thought someone's reading to us, so.
Yeah. Maybe you want to say.
Court, do you have them?
Well, I can, I can pull up your earlier email. Take your moment. Look, somebody else has any other question?
Oh, and I've got it. I do have, you can probably speak to them better than me.
Well, if it started live, I'll pull them up.
The first question was about the flooring replacement.
Yeah.
So the first comment was about, um, I just want to address the nine hundred thousand dollars exactly. You know, for the next four years, uh, so, so Dr. Hunter and I are operating under the assumption, uh, at least up until this year, so that was what we were um allocated and should not exceed. Um, and um, so for, for the next four years, we're going to rely on the building existing conditions assessment. We do know that this town has talked about um modifying its approach, um, but since we're required to provide a five-year plan, uh, we're, we're not going to guess at what the existing uh conditions building study is going to tell us. We'll have that information in the spring. So really, the next four years are placeholders and um, we, we did have requests over nine hundred thousand. Um, we did, we did uh cut it to try to live within the nine hundred thousand, um, but just that's the kind of the answer for why we um came in at exactly nine hundred. We tried to live within um what was our understanding is what our expectation was to come in at, um, and what was allocated to the schools.
So you had truly done a needs-based approach.
Yeah, you know, for example, we looked at the Alcott Boiler and we could have potentially um continued that. Yeah, you know, for example, we looked at the Alcott boiler and we could have potentially, um, continued that study. Um, at the same time, we had conversation with, um, the sustainability director and the deputy town manager about potentially, uh, rolling that into, um, a separate sustainability budget line in FY twenty-six and using FY twenty-five to study it further. So we felt like we might have another funding source for that and, um, and and you know, the 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 next phase would happen in FY twenty to, um, to develop a bid setback. Um, so, you know, we're going to take up that conversation with the town again, but that's something we dropped. It's also larger dollars and we think might be something that, um, the study that we're doing will tell us, um, how important it is to replace those boilers. Um, so maybe there was a couple of other things too, but that was kind of one of the main ones and we felt like, um, we it, we felt like it was not a good idea to do a large-scale project and we were about to get a study that, um, would help us prioritize, um, some significant needs in each of the buildings. So the first question on flooring, it it, so I'll I'll just move on to the question on flooring. Um, so that's, um, the initial focus there has been on, um, the hallways at Alcott. Uh, there's a mix of worn carpet. There's some virtual, uh, VCT. Um, there's some rooms that have both. And so the focus in the initial part has been on, uh, the hallways at Alcott, which are complete. Uh, the next phase of this work will be in the classrooms. Um, and after Alcott, there's also work to be done at Thoreau, uh, significant wear and tear on carpets and some of the flooring. Um, the VCT was just in poor condition at Alcott where with things peeling, so that was kind of a larger scale. And we think this level, um, this funding will get us, um, to meet our needs at Alcott and into Thoreau as well. Um, we would look to, um, you know, we're not going to need to do this at the middle school. Willard is in a little bit better shape, so I I think this will, um, kind of get us to a good point, uh, with flooring. Um, and so that's kind of what our plan is there.
I I guess my question, I know the money is not, uh, of a great magnitude here, but I was curious. Uh, did we decide conditions were worse or that we were simply going to accelerate our replacement schedule?
Um, the, we were, it was going to be done over, the initial intent was to do it over four years. Um, I think this is the third year, um, in FY twenty-five, and we thought with the existing conditions study that we're going to have a lot of other things that might need attention, so try to get the rest of this done. Um, next year was the goal.
Thank you.
Moving on, the infrared.
Uh, yeah, question about the infrared. Again, uh, small money given, uh, the overall budget. Just curious, is, should this be an operating expense? And, uh, secondly, is this, uh, a backup to existing fire, uh, protection so that if, uh, the fire protection fails, this, uh, might function, uh, as a backup? How's it work?
So that's a different project, Court. We, um, what we are referring to in Thoreau is, um, a separate project that we have grant funding from Maya to cover a portion of it. Um, so, uh, that's a different project. This is thermographic roof inspections to help us detect leaks. Um, we have some leakage in the elementary buildings, uh, often more during heavy rain. Um, we're not going to worry about Sanborn and 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 Peabody quite as much, um, because they're not going to be there. Um, but, um, we're doing this at the high school this year and, uh, it's basically to help us identify, uh, roof leaks. Longer term, I think it would make sense for us to have some of these items, um, built into, you know, have some funds built into our operating budget. I agree with that. Um, I think that we 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 did focus, uh, on smaller projects this year to not put a large project in here that, uh, we might find something out on in the study that's being done. So should I, what, uh, what is the next one? Um, I think I addressed the third one about nine hundred thousand.
I'm looking at my notes. Uh, what did he actually see next?
Uh, he sees the, Bob, can you hear us?
Uh, what, sometimes, I don't know if you're all speaking into the microphone. I I can hear, uh, some folks better than others.
Um, the next question I think you actually already answered about the nine hundred thousand and what I was sort of written points, I guess.
Yeah.
We go into furniture replacement.
Yeah, thirty seconds on furniture. Do we, uh, cherry pick, uh, individual items or are we doing it, uh, by classroom, by age, by zone? What's? Or is it a combination of only above? Just curious what the thought process is that drives the needs, drives the numbers.
Yeah, our, our, um, we have a new principal at the Thoreau School. The pri- the primary focus is in that building. Um, he's, uh, the furniture there is, uh, his description is old, um, outdated, eclectic. Eclectic is another word for mismatched. Um, and, um, there's no, there's no extra, um, extra inventory to replace, uh, broken items. So I I shared, I don't know if you can see the screen here, but he, what he wants to do is to get, uh, replacement, uh, items that one, they match. Um, and two, um, they, um, they can configure into group space too and not just, um, so like, can you see the screen? Okay, so they could configure that into groups. They they could see individually, they could do groups of three, groups of four. Um, and 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 the focus is on the, um, the lower grades, he said, um, where there's more need, it's older and, you know, just poor condition equipment. Um, this is another one, Court, that I I do think would be, um, nice to have, um, some level of replacement equipment built into the operating budget. Um, there's a little bit of built-up need here. Um, but to have a little bit, uh, of replacement kit, uh, equipment built in so that we can prioritize in the future and have, um, you know, like we do with IT, some ongoing replacement built into the budget. Um, and that would be less than than this ask. Um, but, um, so that's what the the need is. Some of it's a fresh set of eyes in the building, um, and, um, not wanting to kind of accept, uh, you know, the the condition of what they have there.
There is, there are needs in the other schools. I don't want to say they're on it. So we're going to need to keep going with this on that, yeah.
Okay. All right, next is your fire panel question.
Uh, yeah. Quite simply, what happened?
Um, so we 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 had, uh, we have a vendor do an annual inspection. Um, we we've had some issues with the panel, uh, and some of the detectors. Um, we, you know, we're still okay, um, compliance-wise, but, um, we're we're in a place where, um, we have the vendor in regularly and, um, we don't want to get to the point where we're not compliant. Um, and I I think this is a necessary item to avoid that happening, uh, in the, in the not-too-distant future. Um, and this would be a replacement of the panel itself and and all of the detectors, uh, need to be compatible. We would replace all the detectors which are are dated. Um, this was shared, our facilities director, Russ, shared this with the fire department who is on board with the recommendation. Um, we would get competitive quotes when we bid it. Um, we would go through a formal bid process to do this, so the ninety-six thousand dollars is a placeholder estimate. Um, and we would, again, see if we could uh, identify other suppliers that might be interested. Uh, but that's the best estimate we have right now.
So can I just add to that? The fire department is more than on board. The alarm, the system was going off with false alarms almost daily for weeks last summer, so they demanded that we start to make a plan because that's not sustainable. We got it to the place where we could get through the school year, but we we absolutely have to make this change, so.
A minor point, is Norrell a manufacturer or a reseller? You're looking at other quotes and I always wonder what's proprietary and wedded to a system that can't be changed.
Um, they are a service provider. Um, they would get access to equipment to resell to us. But I don't, I I, in talking to Russ, there are other suppliers we could look at. We're not, we're not locked into Norrell. Um, it would be, we'd have to think about our service arrangement if we didn't select Norrell equipment. Um, but we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get there.
Thank you.
Question, so we don't have obviously problem at Alcott right now, we Thoreau, even though it's like one year, or two years, it's a the, you know, we're, who's oldest?
Alcott's oldest.
And Thoreau.
And around, yeah.
That might be coming soon. Um, I hope we're going to be some detectors at the middle school.
Um, can you repeat that?
At the middle school, we're getting some detectors.
So my understanding is that it's the same as the high school, that there's detectors in the hallway. And that's very typical. It's not code to put them throughout classrooms and cost is usually prohibited, but are they Alcott, are they trying to test them? I'm sorry, I don't know.
The question is, yeah, so there are definitely smoke detectors in all of the schools in different degrees.
So that's the question, I guess. If we want to talk on that, we can get some.
Just, I'm just curious if there's a difference between our older schools and, you know, and the high school has them in the hallways, right?
Right.
And like.
And they'll have them in the hallways in the middle school.
That's true.
Yes, yeah, yes.
Great.
And no more fish tanks.
All right, and next, uh, was a question on the Thoreau study. The campus study.
Yeah, I I was frankly shocked at the hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for a beautification study at a single school.
No, it was twenty-five thousand, you know, the FY twenty-four capital plan had a twenty-five thousand dollar placeholder that we spent to run the study. So we paid, that was in the twenty-four plan, so the study's underway. A hundred and fifty-eight, whatever number is, is, is where we got to the nine hundred thousand. We could have gone way beyond that because we expect there's going to be some substantial work to do on that campus, but we figured to start with the one fifty-eight would give us a some money to work with and prioritize, and then we'd look at what we would need to act.
So with that money to execute the results.
Correct.
Correct.
Not that they have.
That's not what the plan says, so we updated. This is the campus-wide study.
Well, I think we knew what it meant, it just wasn't clear.
Right. We can, yeah, we can re- relabel that. So the, we're just getting, just received our survey results back. We'll be digesting that and our consultants will be meeting. We'll have a community forum as kind of a next step. And, um, so we're moving forward on that project.
Uh, next is the Willard tractor.
So I I talked to Russ, uh, about this extensively and did have some of the same questions that were raised about, um, whether we, you know, would need this or whether we could get something smaller. The tractor itself is not, you know, a a a large tractor, but it's it's about four feet wide. Snow blowers, um, cover about eighteen inches. They do require, uh, more effort. It's a very large, um, you know, we wouldn't get this for Thoreau. We wouldn't get it for, uh, Alcott. The amount of open space at the high school and Willard um, are where we would, um, need this. We, they're currently using this tractor. Um, we would be adding, uh, labor time if we replaced it with snow blowers. I also feel like there may be some, um, we 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 take on a little bit more labor risk of, um, you know, I think this is more efficient. Um, it's going to have twenty-year useful life. Um, I I I just, I I feel like it's worth investing in something that will help our maintenance teams do their job better. Um, and so I'm supportive of their request. I I do understand the the other perspective. Um, I I, you know, if somebody told me for sure that we weren't going to have much snow the next ten years, um, you know, maybe we we'd think differently, but I, you know, I I don't know that that is something we can, we can bank on.
It is a minor practical and operational matter. Where would this thing live? How would we protect the asset?
That's a good question, Court. I I, that's something I'll talk to Russ on. I I I think that they have a location for the existing one. I don't know the answer off the top of my head. Um, but I'll make a note in in Ask Russ.
Thank you.
The last one is the campus safety at, um, the Sanborn and Peabody buildings.
Yeah, so I I I would say we we haven't spent a lot on that. I can, I can, as far as the borrowing goes, I I can't really answer that the, um, I mean, I think they borrowed the full nine hundred thousand. Um, however, I can tell you, and we, I've talked to the 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 town is aware of this. I talked to the, um, previous CFO, the the articles are written away that allows us some flexibility if one item, you know, we we, for example, we repurposed the boiler money to other projects, um, in our capital plan. We've also had some projects come in under, other projects come in over. Um, an example is the Thoreau ER year replacement, uh, was significantly over what we asked for and so some of that, uh, funding has come from projects that were under run. Some of that's come from the Sanborn and Peabody, um, funds that were not spent. Um, what we have spent on campus safety at Sanborn and Peabody, I think, was primarily the costs were related to, um, we had issues with our security access, like the building, um, wasn't locking appropriately in multiple locations. Um, so we had to to do some changes, uh, to that. I believe it was in FY twenty-three. Um, so other than that, we're trying to only do what's necessary at Peabody and Sanborn. Um, and certainly that's going to be the approach, um, going forward, not to say that we won't spend it, but, um, you know, we hope we don't need this money.
Yeah, as before. Good, thank you. I think those were mine, Alexa.
Yeah, yeah. And some of mine were duplicates, Court, so you can do.
Yeah. And I sent those a lot of, yeah, and and thank you for forwarding to Bob. I don't know what's happening, you know, why he's, I just could suffer off.
I think once you put it in wrong, once, keep popping it up, you're a.
I, yeah, I did have one more. I I I didn't, I don't remember all of the questions, but I do have one more that I can just, I just wanted to, um, show you a document about the copiers, um, to address that. You know, the question was whether we have, um, let me find it, um. Sorry, I have too many things open. Um, I just wanted to hear that. Here it is. Um, so the question was, you know, in terms of what what our copier needs were. I just wanted to give you a, um, this information. It's a high level. Our assistant manager, business manager worked with, um, our copy center, uh, person and with Rico Copier Company, looked at useful life of our copiers um, and looked at, uh, page counts as well. And we classify our copiers into green, which is on-service contracts, um, yellow, um, which is getting near end of useful life, and red, which is, these are ones we have time and material contracts for. Um, and these are the ones that are regularly getting repaired. Schools are saying, um, you know, asking, um, to get replaced. So to replace these, uh, copier costs that we've seen are about thirteen to fourteen thousand. To replace five of them would be, um, seventy thousand dollars. Um, we did look at the fact that Thoreau has two. We might just replace one there. Um, we probably would defer Ripley and then the bus depot is a smaller one, so it's not the same price category. That probably something we'll try to fund from the operating budget, so. What that would do is address our, um, kind of red, you know, devices that are not, um, working well, and, um, we would then look to try to address these in the future through, um, you know, either end-of-year funds or through the operating budget in FY twenty-five and future years. Um, we do have some small replacements, but this is why we had seventy thousand this year. Um, there was kind of a lump purchase at some point in the past and, um, you know, I, again, this is the type of thing we want to build into a replacement cycle, so we're not asking for seventy thousand in one chunk and, um, you know, I, something I will, uh, work on and and try to build a plan and share it with Dr. Hunter, so we can, we can do that in our future budgets.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the capital plan?
I didn't hear others, what?
What? Yeah, you had those.
There's none, probably like two or three.
Sure, and I think again, you know, things might look different next year, but if for this year, just continue and here into the process we have historically, so. No one else? Good. All right, all right, so now we will move on to our second read of policy FF. We have our existing policy, and then we have in front of us the MASC recommended policy. I would entertain any thoughts on the matter.
I'm just trying to pull it up. I think it's in the packet, too.
Yeah, again, I'll just go back to, I think that I think it's really good. I don't remember if you still remember this, but so I had looked through all of the available the online database that includes not every school district in the state, but everyone that that has this available electronically, and I think all but two districts adopted this policy and or the one that existed before it. That exercise also showed me how pretty decent we are at updating our policies. I was really surprised at how dated some of the policies of other districts are, so we do that worked pretty well, especially this year and last, so. In any event, anyone have any comments, suggestions, final thoughts?
This will cause no surprise. I'm going to vote against the change. I think the current policy serves us well, number one. Number two, the timing is unnecessary and unfortunate. And number three, I would not vote to exclude our select board from a voice in the process.
Anyone else? All right. All right, so moving on to our action items. Our first action item, if someone could pull up motion language, would be to approve our FY twenty-five CPS operating budget, noting Cynthia's comment in the discussion that this is ends up being sort of a not-too-exceed number and that we will have likely discussions moving forward in the coming weeks and months. Anyone have the motion language again?
I have it, yeah.
Okay, here.
I move that the conference call committee votes approve the FY twenty-five operating budget in the amount of forty-six million, six hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and to further approve the accompanying draft warrant article language for not meeting approval.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Then I'm going to ask for motion language to entertain a motion to approve the FY twenty-five CPS.
I move that the conference call committee votes approve the FY twenty-five capital budget in the amount of nine hundred thousand dollars and to further approve the accompanying draft warrant article language for not meeting approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yes, again, yeah. And then finally, I would entertain a motion to approve policy FF facilities naming as recommended by the MASC. Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. All right, well, with that, we move to adjourn and say, choose your favorite quote.
See you next year.
Just before we adjourn, since we just, the majority prevailed on changing the policy, when will we have a discussion about what we're trying to do?
Yeah, so we will, we so the next order of business per the policy will be to specify the consideration period that allows for public comment. I can say likely, I'm going to make sure that that's retroactive because we've received so much anyway, and then we'll designate a time moving forward, so. And then the only other thing was I would like to make an announcement because there are some specifics here that say that the facility, any suggestion should be put in writing to the chair, so I just certainly want to make sure that that is publicly available too, so I think all of those details will come out when our next meeting is, which will be January ninth, I guess.
And you will forward us directly any?
Oh, of course, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's what I said, you know, go to the chairs, I'm not knowing.
Of course, yeah, 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 and I mean, I would assume it says to the chairs, I'm assuming it will come in via our like school committee forum, or I don't know. If it doesn't, I certainly will forward it, but maybe actually we'll just specify that, so.
And the timeframe would be?
I'm not sure. I'm sure I'm going to consult, I'll talk to Dorothy, actually, no, Dorothy, it's for Tyler. I will talk to Alicia, see sort of what's been good practice.
But I think this is going to be a high interest.
Sure.
And there's potentially a warrant, I hope, on town meeting, and I just wonder. We just have to.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Lot going on. All right, thank you, guys. Happy New Year.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We are.